Okay, what's that? What's the pledge?
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the agenda, Congress, there will be some changes. Jimmy won't be here. I gotta, he sent an email, just gotta give him up where he's at. So I'll do that one for Jim. Charles will not be here from Golden West. Fair Board, they canceled too. Fair Board is out, so we have, we believe the elected officials. Nate won't be here, so our 12 o'clock statement is out. The other one, we have, how many executive sessions?
So, the three, the 2:30 is out, but we'll move the 1 o'clock to right after Roden Bridge, after you read that email.
Okay.
And then the next two to follow right after.
We'll just follow that, okay. Sounds like a plan. Any other changes to the agenda?
Can we, I know we're doing a workshop, but can we add discussion on the HR on their old business? In the meeting, yeah. And we suppose, I think Becky knows this too, we have the city coming in on comment, public comment at-
I don't think she was gonna do that.
Oh, she changed her mind?
Well, she never called me back, so she was like, there's other stuff coming in that public comment.
Well, she texts after-
Other part of Ted.
Oh, I don't know. Remember Nathan told me she'd come in a public comment, and she told me she was coming in a public comment, so I don't know.
Yeah, she never let me know that.
Well, if she's here, we'll do it.
Yep, her and the chief want her to come in and comment.
Have you talked to Jeannie? Because she said, you told her it really wasn't time to go over the handbook today. And she went to, she went ahead and drove to Sundance last night because she knew she couldn't get there today, of course. But she could zoom with us, and we could just go over maybe a few things, some of the things that we're gonna have to decide when we do the handbook.
Need to do that in our workshop?
Um, yeah, I'll text her and see what-
So she's, or Carrie's in the waiting room, and can someone let her in? I don't know what that means.
I can text Jeannie and see when she would be available.
Yeah, we can just do that in the workshop then.
Okay.
The old business, are there any decisions due aid on that?
Yeah, just to discuss it, what, I wanna go over that motion, make sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay, discuss the motion, the major, okay.
That's why I figured it's more than just workshop.
So when is our workshop?
It's just right after the meeting. Or whatever it is.
I would say probably right after lunch would be a good, I think it'd be a pretty good time for it.
I will text her and see what her schedule is.
Okay, sounds good. Any other changes to the agenda?
This seems out of the agenda. It's Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. It's just a declaration by the board.
We'll add that, um, Child Abuse Awareness Month.
Child Abuse Prevention.
Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month.
That's it.
It's a proclamation by the board.
Okay, is that it? Make a motion?
We need, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda with the changes, I won't remember all of them. That'll be discussed.
Michael? I have a motion prefaced to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Here or none? All please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Well, voucher time. Well, I guess since we've done this vouchers, we'll go ahead and move forward with the consent agenda. We've got a bunch of signatures. We will move forward with consent agenda since we've done with vouchers. If anyone have anything they need to pull or discuss on consent agenda.
Um, just, can you refresh my memory on the, what this emergency rules and declaration of emergency is?
That was our board dequisition.
Okay.
We have to bring them in, we don't have enough time to get it all done before we may start your comments.
Right.
So we did it by emergency declaration, bring in the new rules, then we'll go ahead and bring them, normally like we should. This way we got the newest rules at our disposal.
And those are the rules that we went over, that we printed out for us?
Those ones too.
Yeah, the ones we did last night.
Those don't have any, they don't take away from the taxpayers' rights in any way, do they?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because that was a question, I was wondering if we somehow limit their ability to do any kind of appeals or adjustments to their-
Just, I think what a lot of it does is bring us up to date on the new legislative laws that just went in.
Okay.
I think that gets us caught up with them, so we're current, so our, what we're looking at is current with what the states, but yeah.
Right, I remember reading through it, but I didn't see anything that would limit it, but I wanted to ask because I figured you had more knowledge of that than I did.
That's what that one is. Any other discussion on the consent agenda?
Uh, I had a, I think a change on the minutes from last time, but I didn't bring it with me.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there any way that we can, before we sign them? Because I've had a couple people ask me if it takes the rights away from them, and I told them that I would bring up that question. Could we, can we make sure that we talk about that a little bit before we sign that for those people that are listening?
Yeah, that's what we do, we're doing that right now.
Alright.
That's why we discuss it now before we approve it.
Okay.
So, it's just, it's just, when we talked about the HR, we said we're gonna move it temporary, move to temporarily take it out of the clerk's office, but we're taking it out of the clerk's office and temporarily putting it into the attorney's office. So that was a change I thought we should make. Does that make sense?
So you're wanting to change your motion?
Just say, no.
Because I read the, I listened to the tape again.
So did I, and I didn't bring my printed sheet that I read, but we say we're gonna take it out of the clerk's office and put it into the attorney's office temporarily. I think Michael would appreciate that.
I think the intent was to do it temporarily into the attorney's office.
Yes, to give it to them temporarily.
Yeah, was the intent of the motion.
Yes.
Everybody good with that, the change to motion for that, two minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Any other motion then?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
As amended?
Second?
You said it stands.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As amended. Okay. We have a motion prefaced to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Do you guys have a problem, I assume he gets her department head report, she's gotta head to the doctor's appointment.
Okay.
We'll get to it real quick.
Susie Everman, Weston County Treasurer. In my office, we're doing what we, you know, we're collecting taxes and registrations, and the letters, reminder letters I sent out last month for the property taxes, I think they really made a difference. Because we've gotten a lot more revenue in there. So that's it for my treasurer's report, but I do have an issue, Vera, I'm sorry, with the comment you made in the paper that the commissioners are governing the elected officials. Or something to that fact, that you were, I don't remember what it said, but it says something to the fact that the commissioners are over the elected officials.
No, I don't believe I said that.
Okay, well, that's what the paper stated. And anyway, so we're all, we're all equal. Every elected commissioner, every elected county office is all equal to each other. Nobody is the boss of anybody.
I don't believe I said that. I was talking about employees. I didn't say anything about elected officials.
I'll remember some of that.
Okay, I'll have to check the paper, but, um, and so if, and then, but yeah, all the county, what's the saying, 183111, all county officers are responsible for the acts of their assistants, and as such are liable for their official bonds and their actions.
That's correct.
Um, I wanna say that my department is, has been very loyal to me, that I've had them since I've started as the treasurer, and I'm very proud of it. But if there's any issues with my office, I appreciate any of you coming to my office. And I think that's about it.
And I understand that, Susie, that you, by statute, you're responsible for your employees in your office.
Yes.
We're just talking about human resources, as far as education, benefits, how everything needs to be consistent with everybody across the board, those things.
Yeah, that's a good point. And then as far as the HR person, firstly, I don't really believe that right now we need one, because every time we do get somebody that has been assigned to that HR position, they have, they have not fulfilled their duties, I wanna say, and I would leave it at that. Because there's a lot of issues, and I would appreciate you commissioners all reading your own statutes, you know, what you have to do, or what you're in charge of. And I think if you would focus on that, instead of all this other stuff that's going on, I don't think we'd be having all the issues that you guys are having, like the lawsuits or whatever else is coming down the pipeline.
One thing I will say is, yes, the department heads are equals on every level, but ultimately, if there is a lawsuit, the department head will not be getting the lawsuit, the county commissioners will be, and they will be coming out of county coffers for those lawsuits, so.
No, I have something.
You have bonds on those, I understand, but, well, you won't be the one getting the lawsuit, the county will be getting the lawsuit. You may be involved in it, kind of like the county commissioners. And I think that our department heads do a wonderful job. As far as your comment about we've had HR people that haven't done their job, well then, I would say we haven't done ours, if they weren't doing theirs, we need the board. So that is a reflection on us. And I don't think that's a solution to say, well, because they didn't do their job, that means it will not work. I think that means we need to be more accountable to do our jobs and make sure we hold those people accountable.
Exactly, instead of going off on these other little things that you're wandering off to. Um, and then, well, I'm not gonna go there right now, but that, about the department heads and the lawsuits and all that stuff, that can get turned around real fast. This is from personal experience. Okay, that's all I got.
Thanks, Susie.
Thanks, Susie.
Oh, good comments.
Pam Walter, first on a personal visit here. I would like to say yesterday, April and the assessors' authors were absolutely wonderful in helping me in some stuff that I had no idea, a look up researcher or anything. So kudos to them for helping me there. Another, now switching my hat to mayor. Yesterday, I don't know if you're all aware of the incident, the phone calls going throughout, not just Weston County, but not just Wyoming, but across the nation. I was actually sitting there when everything started, and a unbelievable workmanship between Highway Patrol, the Sheriff's Department, and the police department. So I thought I'd let you guys know that as well. And with that, since we were unable to get on the agenda, or have the agenda amended for us to be put on it, we don't have enough time, since you guys allow 10 minutes, five minutes, that we would like to invite, but highly recommend, that you attend another town meeting in regards to the police department and dispatch. It'll be next week, Wednesday at 5 o'clock at the City Chamber, and we will get an agenda put together for you guys ahead of time. Does he, is he coming in today?
Yeah.
I need one.
Oh. Thank you. So we would like to start to have a working relationship, like hopefully as well as our law enforcement work together yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Other comments?
Yes, it's a question. Now I see she's over here, Gillian Seuss, but I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to answer her question the way she asked it here. It says, "Why do they need to sign an emergency over property taxes?"
We did not, Gillian, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
We did not sign an emergency order over property taxes. We signed a board of equalization that it gives the taxpayers the rights to come in and question the assessors about their property taxes. By doing the one on emergency session, we fell in line with what the new legislative, what's come out of the legislative office in Cheyenne. By doing, we don't have enough time to do it by-
By their rules.
By the regular rules, so we do it by emergency session, emergency rules. That way, the taxpayers have the up-to-date rights to question their property taxes. Does that make sense?
With respect, we should be able to read those rules before you vote on them on our behalf.
They're out there, you just have to go for it.
You have an emergency session where you are signing over, we already have a process to appeal. So what has changed?
It brought the board of equalization, brought your rights up to date with what came out of Cheyenne. So we are not using two different sets of rules for you to question your property tax. It puts all the rules on the same playing field. So your rules are updated with what came out of Cheyenne, not what came out of Cheyenne several years past. You have, you have the rules of the newest legislative laws that come out of Cheyenne.
And are you doing this in conjunction with the state, or is this solely Weston County doing this by themselves?
This is in conjunction with the state. We are, we are following, our rules are being compliant and following the state's rules. Basically, it's this up-to-date with the state's rules. We can't start the process three months ago because we don't know what the rules are gonna be until they come out of Cheyenne. So by doing, by an emergency resolution, by emergency there-
We get the updated rules.
You have the updated rules too, so everybody has got the same rules.
Well, thank you for the explanation.
Okay. Any other public comment?
That's all I have here.
No other public comment? We'll move forward. Jimmy couldn't be here today, he sent a quick update of what's going on. Number one, he said he had an employee retire, and he would like permission to hire his replacement. That's in his own department, so he's- Yep, it's in his budget, so we, he's, we can all tell him to just go ahead and move forward with that. Secondly, Fair Lodge Engineering had a change in their schedule, so they moved forward. They are surveying the Barton Road now, so that's moving ahead, that'll be done, working on that.
Will we still have a public hearing on that?
Yeah, we have, we had the one public hearing thing. Move forward with it, after the survey and everything, then we'll go into another advertised public comment section to get that done. Number three, YDOT wants to eliminate the East Fork on the intersection of Old Highway 85 out there. That's on the south side of the bridge, where that fork comes in there. The approach is gonna change, so the way it's gonna be engineered, that'd be just, it'd be a hazard. So they're gonna re-engineer that and just bring one approach into that bridge then. That make sense to everybody?
That's the road that comes from 85 in and the dump in, right?
So Old 85, for Old 85, it's off the highway, south of the railroad bridge.
Okay.
Okay. He forwarded, Jimmy forwarded some emails on the Dewey Road, Coldwater Project. Did everybody get those? Brad?
I did.
Yep, they're asking, the state only pays 25 cents a yard for fill. We're gonna need to fill out there. Jerry wondered if to build a dam, but it's like that would cause way too many problems, we'd have to go more permitting. He's thinking he's probably gonna have to have, offer him 35 to 40 cents a yard, get it up to where it should be to get the project moving forward. His concerns are, if we go higher than that, we'll probably get reviewed at the end of the project by the state. No question whatsoever. By keeping it at 35 to 40 cents, I think we'd get it through without being reviewed again on that.
Is that agreed upon by the landowner?
Yeah, that'll be between him and the landowner.
Okay. Is that, I'm sorry, is that the going rate?
Yeah, that's, the state only pays 25 cents, but the going rate, I think what the last one we've done were, I think Tom Bruce is down there. Someone has a microphone that's on teams that's not muted. Hey, Carrie, you wanna mute your microphone? Okay, and then, I spoke with Chris Farr with Prison Logistics, other people who run the gravel pit up on Beaver Creek. He's gonna meet with them to see how much gravel they wanted to donate to fix the bad spots in the road, and he's gonna meet with them this week, but the weather's gonna change that probably, so. That's where Jimmy's upbeat is. He's out plowing so this morning, since it's a shorthanded. Jamie, do you have anything to relate to Jimmy or not?
No.
That's Jimmy's. So we are up for department head reports. Okay. Hey, Jeannie? You're up for the executive session that you requested.
Okay.
We need to know what it's for, and we can go move forward with that.
Potential litigation.
Triple I?
Yep.
Thank you.
4H, Aaron, you're up first.
Perfect! Little update on what the 4H program is doing. We gained a few more 4H members, um-
Could you, could you please identify for-
Oh, yes, sorry, Erin Pershian, the Weston County 4H educator, so. We're up to 157 youth members enrolled, and we really have kind of open enrollment all year. So I am really encouraging all of them to be enrolled by May 15th to participate in all the summer activities. Last year, we had a lot of kids sign up like the day before fair, or the week before county fair, and they kind of miss out on the learning opportunity, and they make planning really hard. So that's my goal, is kind of that May 15th enrollment deadline to get everybody enrolled. We've gained a few more volunteers, so I have 23 current volunteers that have gone all through the screening and training process, and six more that are still working through that process. So in April, we have archery project meetings, cloverbuds, robotics, horse, dog, and the food fun in 4H. We are working on the Regional Leader Summit, which will happen in Gillette on April 22nd, and we've opened it up to the whole northeast corner. So we should have Sheridan, Johnson, Campbell, Crook, Weston, Neber, and Converse Counties present, hopefully. So the archery county shoots will actually happen in that first week of May, so the 7th and 8th, and then the 13th will be the outdoor county shoot. So if you guys are interested in popping in to see any of that, we would love to have you. 4H camp is 74- 4H camp is 74 days away, I believe, so we're busy getting it planned for Mallow Camp, which is crazy to think that, um, we're just 74 days away from the middle of June. And then National Volunteer Week is the, starts the April 16th. So going to try and do a few fun activities for the volunteers that spend a lot of time, um, putting into the 4H program. This week, I am participating in the WEA 4HYDP. So that's our, the Wyoming 4H, um, professional development, um, group. So we're doing some spring training and it's been really good. And we'll go through Thursday. Um, I'm then going to participate in the Positive Youth Development Camp Experiences for Youth to Thrive, training the end of the month, um, with the 4H educator from Campbell County. So I'm kind of excited to hopefully gather some new and exciting ideas for 4H camp. And then I have been working with the Fair Board, Junior Livestock Committee, and then Kirk and Neber Counties for 4H camp this year because Neber County is going to join us for the first time again since probably the early eighties. So we're excited to have Neber County jump back into 4H camp. And then just some fun activities of pictures of the kiddos doing all the fun things. So, any questions about what is happening in the 4H world?
Sounds like you're going to have a large group then, or is this good?
Hopefully, um, we were just about 50, 55 kids last year, and that was with camp not happening for two years due to COVID. So we're hoping we get closer to that 105. Um, that's kind of where we, our target of cutoff, so, yeah, we're hoping when three counties will be close to that. Okay.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Mr. Fields.
The update, hard work.
Awesome.
You're trying to outdo Aaron with look like big handouts.
I am. No, I didn't have time. I'm Vicki Hayman with the Weston County Extension. So, um, we would like to present you with the High Altitude Baking Cookbook. So that is one of my big projects that I did. I also applied for, um, regional national awards. One publication is this book, one is another one through our Extension Association, which is called the, uh, National Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences. So I hope maybe we have, win something regionally or nationally for this publication. Um, this past month in March, I did a Zoom canning class, my first one via Zoom. It wasn't too bad of a class. It's more fun to be there live, but I didn't really want to travel to Warland this winter, so that worked. I've done seven in-person educational programs the month of March. I'm still writing columns, I'm still doing, uh, weekly rodeo, rodeo, weekly radio spots. Yeah, rodeo. I was at an event this weekend. Um, I did one Facebook video on hard cooking eggs that was posted to our Facebook page. I'm still working on ancient grain recipes, so, um, some of the gals in the office, we cook some things up and they taste test. I did attend President Seidel's UW in Your Community on March, I think that was the 14th-
Yeah.
-that evening, and where he gave a brief program. And I think basically that's what all I've been doing, so. Any questions?
Yes. At least for sale somewhere.
Yes. I, I have a few copies at the office. You can also get online and download the publication for free. So I think they're 26.50 without tax, so maybe 28.09 with tax.
Yeah, it's a weird number.
Odd number, but yes, and if you want more than I work with the university and they get them up to you. They are at the extension office. So I hope you-
So we can get them, we can get them in your office, Phil?
Yes, yes.
What was your website?
Oh, my, no, you're going to want to know. I'll have Aaron pull it up. I have it on auto, hit the button.
Also, they're checking out at the library.
You could, yes, the, um, the library, what do you call it? They, they bought one for every county library.
Great.
So they are in the library. I don't know if Upton got one, but Newcastle did, right?
I think they sent two, is that one of them?
Okay, so they did.
The website is uwyoextension.org. And then it's forward slash, I think UW Nutrition.
That is really cool, Vicki.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoy it.
Yes.
Yeah, uwyoextension.org backslash UW Nutrition.
Thank you, Vicki.
You're welcome.
Great job. You're up next, Brenda.
Okay, I didn't bring one for everyone. All right. First off, just kind of an update on some of the maintenance stuff we've had, had issues with. You probably heard last week, our furnace quit working. The wa, one of the water pumps went out in the basement. We had some flooding. Um, Steve got Powder River, out of Gillette, to come down and look at it, and they got it operational. And we're waiting for parts so that it can be officially fixed. Um, we've had issues with lights out front in our porch entryway for months now. 21 Electric has been there multiple times to, to look at it and never fix the problem. Um, we had a gentleman in yesterday, Bill from 21 Electric, and I would like to give him a shout out because he stayed until he got things functioning. And then he proceeded to go to Upton and wired up, uh, the handicap access bar on the door. It was installed last Friday up there, and he got it wired up, so it's now functioning as well. The blood pressure kits, a couple of months ago, I talked to you about these. I have to read. It's in collaboration with the Wyoming Center on Aging at the University of Wyoming and the Wyoming Department of Health Chronic Disease Program. We delivered these kits on last Friday. And they delivered eight of them. Five of them will be, um, put into the collection at Newcastle and two will be put into the collection at Upton. They come with the blood pressure cuff and monitor, um, an informational bag with a stress ball. And then they made up these, um, let me drop all my papers. They made up these booklets that go with it that have all sorts of blood pressure health information. They put a lot of work into it. They personalize them for every county that, that they brought them to. And then they have one of the most concise, um, resource materials from government to health to, you know, all kinds of agencies that offer assistance in Weston County. So, um, I did a, I think a magnificent job.
And those are for people to check them out?
They'll be able to check them out, yep, we'll have them. We're looking at April 10th to be able to have them to check out, so.
Will there be more available if they go over, if they're a big hit?
It sounds like it, from visiting with the, the Warland, I've been delivered the- Anyway. Creative Aging classes, I've mentioned those to you before. We have the opportunity to get another grant, and so we're going to start our fourth Creative Aging class. They're available for people who are 55 or older, um, runs eight weeks. Walter is going to be the instructor again, and we're going to do basic drawing this time. Um, we're hoping to kick that off on April 19th. The seed library, this has been something that we've been working on for a couple of years. And never quite, all the, all the pieces don't quite fall into place. So this year, we're launching it just with what we have. Um, we've had people donate seeds. They'll be packaged up individually and you'll basically check them out, so to speak. It'll, won't be, they won't be linked into the catalog or anything, but you'll be able to come in, um, sign out, up to buy packets of seeds. And then at the end of the season, it's not mandatory, but we ask that you save some seeds and bring back to replenish for next year. Um, we're working on this in coordination with the Fellering Fingers and Dirtballers Garden Clubs. And so we're hoping that will be up and running by the end of April, so.
What question on your seed? Do you guys have polydote seeds? If not, would you like to have some?
We would love to have some.
I think my wife might have a bunch of them.
Okay.
I will visit with her if I can.
Yep.
Do you, how do you want them packed, in little ziplock bags? These aren't going to be assorted by color, these are going to be assorted colors.
Just assorted, yeah. That would be fine. When we're breaking them down, I mean, the bigger seeds, we're breaking down into like eight or 10 a package. And then some of the other seeds that are-
I think she's got like a five gallon bucket full.
Like our teeny tiny, we'll just do like, you know, an acre of that. Yeah.
Yeah. She's so god with that. She flexed a bunch of them last year.
Yep, we'll be putting the word out that, you know, people have seeds to donate, that we will take them. Been in contact with a couple of, um, garden catalog people that, that send us seeds for free. So between those and between what people donate, I think we'll, we'll do, we'll do fine this first year. And then lastly, um, National Library Week is coming up. It's April 23rd to the 29th. We'll be having our annuals book sale as well as an open house on Friday, the 28th. And we'd love to have you guys stop down and have a cup of coffee. We do the 21st century to build, to bake cookies, so there's always homemade cookies. We'd love to see you down there. Any questions?
Question, Brenda?
Yeah.
Thank you, Brenda. Thanks, Brenda. Brenda. Officer Fields, are you going to do Brian's update?
Sure.
Put you on the spot whether you were for it or not, I guess.
Our Dan Field's with the sheriff's office. Brian's not here because of the weather, um, but, uh, don't have much to, uh, I don't have handouts or anything, sorry. You're required, apparently. But, uh, don't have much, um, going on besides what you, uh, they're doing the work on the dispatch center and elevator is still, still getting worked on, uh, making progress on it. They're smart in their framing some of the walls in for the server room, uh, so we can continue to move forward with that, with that project. Other than that, I don't think we have much. Uh, I heard the mayor talk about, uh, the incident with the schools and everything throughout the, the state and the region deal with the, the response, um, that portion of it, uh, 911. It's almost like a swatting call type thing, it sounds like, um, so. Other than that, I don't think we have much more.
Mayor Gilteary had mentioned that all involved entities worked real smooth yesterday. Is that your opinion as well?
I was not informed about it beside the phone calls from the sheriff prior to that this was going on. Uh, I was off duty, I didn't get a phone call or anything to, to know about it, that's, that's only- So I, I was not there present to, to observe it, but I've, I know there's, I think it worked well with everyone who was working at that time. I don't think anyone was notified who was not on duty or any type of call out went out, which is, is a bit of a mission.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a clerk.
I have nothing to add for it.
This is usual?
Yep.
Mike Stolten County Attorney. It's pretty much status quo from where we were last time. Uh, we did have a training with law enforcement. The Upton Police Department, Newcastle Police Department and the Sheriff's Office last Friday looked very well. They seem, they're not, not seem, they've worked together really well and they all want to do the, the best job they can. So that was very successful. And, uh, I don't know if Jeannie has anything to add, but that's pretty much status quo from last month, so.
Did you get a, like, copy of this letter that the city ran in?
Um, I saw it for a second.
Did, Dan, did you get a copy?
I did, I put it, I took it over the sheriff's box.
We should make Michael a copy.
Did I pass Deputy Fields, Sergeant Fields in the hallway, he just showed it up here.
Anything else for Michael? Okay. Department head room, so. That concludes the department head.
We do have mold business now. What's that?
So, we passed a motion this last meeting. I wanted to see how that process went. I think there was some, my understanding, there was some confusion there. Did everything get transferred over that was required to your department? And if not, what wasn't? And what were the issues?
Uh, Clerk Catlock and I have been talking about that. We, I've sent out what, you know, the process we believe that we understand with the board made their motion on. Obviously, handbook questions will come to county attorney's office. Complaints, concerns will come to the county attorney's office. The intake process, the, yeah, we would like, uh, the, so, if it involves payroll, I do believe, and Jeannie can correct me if I, she thinks I'm wrong, but if it involves payroll, I still believe under statute that it's the clerk's forte. It's that intake process where it doesn't involve that. That's where it gets us a sticky, like, what part is, what part isn't the payroll process. So, she, Clerk Catlock and I have been working on making sure everything is being transferred, needs to be transferred. What I've requested now is the intake packet. So, if somebody has a question, it's strictly HR related, I know what I'm looking at. Jeannie does, or whoever.
Well, and where I'm trying to get clear is, is that I don't, from my understanding from the motion, it had nothing to do with payroll. Payroll is a clerk's role, and by statute, that's where it belongs. HR now, I had a discussion with Becky earlier in the week, which I was a little confused on where, and maybe I misunderstood, that's why I want to clear it up. The handbook is HR, correct? Or is it not HR? Because you had said that's totally, it's not HR. So, is it or isn't it HR? And I'm not an HR expert, that's why I want to clear the air.
And talking to all of the other department heads, it's never been HR.
And see, policies and procedures, from my understanding, which I had said then, policies and procedure are directly HR functions. And when an employee is hired, they get a handbook, which kind of gives you the guidelines of how it works in their departments.
But handing it out of a handbook is something different. The department heads for twenty years have been in charge of making the changes. Once the changes are made, the board approves those changes. HR, even the clerk's office, isn't the one that makes the changes, it's the department heads.
Well, and as we discussed then, this is where my confusion comes, is we, Nathan and I, and Jeannie's well aware of this too, Nathan and I opposed that motion when it was put in to give Jeannie the handbook. We did that, but the rest of the board approved that to go through. So, whether or not we did it twenty years ago, or have done it for twenty years this way, it was approved by the board to give her the handbook and for her to go through the handbook and up to date. I brought up questions at the time, if you remember. The insurance company had approved the handbook, and my, I questioned why we needed it. And I'm not speaking for Commissioner Todd, but I believe he questioned it too. So, I believe as a board, we have to decide whether or not, you know, we can go round and round all day long about what we have done for twenty years. Because we have done it for twenty years, doesn't necessarily mean it was done correctly. Now, I'm not saying it was done incorrectly, but there's where my confusion is. And I think we have drawn minds in the sand of, well, we've done it this way forever. I have never intended for payroll to be taken away from Becky, and I don't think that was ever the intention of the motion. And again, I don't feel this is a point of the fingers thing. I think this is something that we're trying to approve and get better, which is, wasn't under my understanding when I voted against it. But apparently, that was the board's decision when that motion was approved, that we needed a handbook, and we needed it updated. And now, we're questioning whether or not the handbook is valid or not valid. At this point, I just want to know what direction we're going in, because frankly, I'm confused. If we approved the motion then to have the handbook redone, then I believe we need to have the handbook redone according to the board. And I don't think that's pointing fingers at any one department head. I think that's just trying to make the departments better. And there is a possibility, whether people believe it or not, that we could be doing certain things wrong. Whether we are or not, I'm still questioning, because I'm not an HR expert. But I think we're getting way too offended in departments over asking questions. And as a commissioner personally, I have the right to ask any question that I want to get to the bottom of an answer. And I don't claim to know it all, that's why I'm asking the questions. So, I would like some clarification from this board, because that motion was made by a board previous, whether or not we are going to have this handbook redone. And if we are going to have that done, then we put Jeannie in charge of that, by that board, put Jeannie in charge of that. And we're either splurging off in different directions, and I'm not trying to stir the pot, I'm just trying to get some clarity, so we're not pulling against each other in a tug of war.
I think we're, some of, I think most of the resistance came from is, the elected officials are feeling that someone else is going to write a handbook without their input, which, that is, because elected officials, their employees, are their responsibility. We as the Board of Commissioners don't write their job descriptions. Our, I, my personal feeling is, when we get a handbook presented to us, we review it, we also ask the department heads if they're comfortable with it before we approve it. I think there was some misunderstandings, some headbutting went on when this all started, that the handbook was going to be rewritten without the department heads' input. I think that is where a lot of the opposition came from.
So, to be fair, Jeannie has talked to the department heads.
I was going to say, I thought that was...
I know she has. And they're all pretty much on board with her. So, I'm not sure where this is coming from. Clearly, you know, things have been done traditionally one way. Yes, the department heads are responsible for the people in their office, totally hiring and firing, and supervising their daily activities. But the basis of the employees, we still are responsible at the base of everything, they're county employees. So, we're responsible for everyone to have a procedure and guidelines to follow. That's as a commissioners. They can have their own office procedures, of course, they can, in their own offices, they can have their own procedures. But we must be consistent across the board as a county, if that makes any sense. And the educational part of the handbook should be the human resources person. Every human resources person should be the one that sits down and says, here's your handbook, you know, with their supervisor, if that's how the supervisor, you know, that would be up to the supervisor if they wanted to be involved in that part, because they'll have probably some of their own inter-office policies to add. Every office has different responsibilities. But the same with benefits and retirement, the human resources person is responsible for the educational part. Putting it into payroll, that's Becky's office's part. So, once they've been educated on, here's, here's how your benefits work, here's your form, then the form goes to Becky. That's her responsibility. But the educational part will be human resources.
And as being on the board, this is where my confusion comes in, is, okay, so, if she's not doing a handbook, and when we stated back then, if our handbook was appropriate according to our insurance company, then exactly what did we spend twenty thousand dollars? And we asked Jeannie to do this, or the board did. And I'm not exactly sure if, you know, Jeannie's looking into these things, and she's pointing out some things that she's seen. She's saying she's not HR, an expert, but she is pointing out some things. And then, when we start talking about those things, for whatever reason, we get all bent out of shape about it. I think that open discussion is good. I just want to know, what exactly are we, are we getting a new handbook? Do we need a new handbook? If we don't need a new handbook, then why was the motion made to get a new handbook? And how are we going to move forward so that we actually solve the problems that we're doing? Because right now, I don't see that we're solving anything except making each other angry when the questions are there.
I mean, historically, there's always been a handbook.
Yep.
And who's written it, who's been, who's done it, probably, probably the department heads have gotten together to do it. So, we've asked Jeannie to update the handbook that the department heads had done, where she went in and put the legalities into the handbook that are required by law, which we should do. And I believe she's talked, Jeannie, you've talked to all the department heads, is that correct?
Jeannie? Do we have a mic on?
She's froze.
Can't hear you. The other point on that chair, why she's coming back in, is you were on the other side of that vote. Why, what was your perception of what we were doing? Because, I mean, you voted for that, so I'm just, like, again, I'm way confused on where we're going.
Well, there was, our handbook hadn't been revised and updated for several years. That was, that was the, why I would voted for it, is to give some of the handbook address, you know, updated to the new policies and stuff.
Right. And that's where, you know, I had hoped that we were going with it as well, if that's what we were going to do.
Well, I think the resistance came is, it was perceived that this was going to happen without the other elected officials' input.
Well, and my, when she met with us a few times, Jeannie is back on, I don't know if she can hear us or not, but I thought she had stated that she did meet with the other elected officials and got their input during this process. And I could be wrong about that as well, but I'm pretty sure that's what she told us. Are you there, Jeannie? We still can't hear you.
Mute.
Is your mute on? Yeah, I don't know.
Just to call her up.
Maybe just do a call. Call in.
Yeah, call her, then we'll turn our microphones off, we'll use the...
She has no microphone. I think we've assigned stuff, and it's just think that we're all kind of, you know, going off in different directions. That's why I think clarification is needed.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, yes.
And I can hear you. I can hear you before, but you just couldn't hear me. So, anyway, I want to, I can address a lot of those issues. So, um, Tom, when you guys asked me to go ahead and try to revise the personnel handbook, I went ahead and I looked at the last, obviously, the current handbook that you have. I looked at the previous handbook, which is pre-two thousand and sixteen handbook. And I also reviewed some comments that LGLP, the insurance carrier, had provided to us in two thousand and sixteen with that handbook. And what I found is that the proposed changes that LGLP had suggested to the commissioners were never made, there were never changes made. The old, so the handbook that was done, that was done, didn't...
Try it again. You're not accurate.
So, they tried this way. So, the old, the changes that were suggested from LGLP from two thousand and sixteen were never made for the current handbook. So, where I started was, I got obviously copies of all of those, and I reviewed LGLP's comments to see what they were. I then went in and I decided that there needed to be more, um, more to a number of the different sections of the handbook. It definitely still had a lot of procedures to do. And so, if I wave an example, you guys had a very short sexual harassment and sexual harassment policy that was, that you had in your handbook, but it didn't really outline the process upon which someone to make a sexual harassment complaint, and what the steps would be to go through that, and how that would be determined. And so, I went in and added some more details into a number of the different policies for legality reasons, so that if someone did have a sexual harassment issue, they could, would know who they need to report that to, and then what steps would be taken. And so, that's by way of the example. So, when I started working on it, I rounded up all the department heads and the electeds and met with them and let them know that this is what I was working on, that I wanted to get their input. And I met with, well, I invited all of them to all the different meetings. I think we had four or five different meetings, probably overall, throughout the course of time. I got a lot of input from them. I provided them a copy of the draft that was done in November, and got feedback from them on what they'd like to see, or what they thought was questioned. So, I think overall, the elected officials and the department heads I spoke to liked more detail in the handbook, rather than just having a little paragraph about something. They liked the fact that it's spelled out, and that they can follow along, and their employees will generally have a place to go look, you know, to figure out kind of where they start with different issues, like medical leave, sexual harassment complaints,残疾 disabilities accommodations. I mean, all of those things are, I think, that are spelled out. And I think overall, they all appreciate the fact that that's in there. There was, back in the pre-two thousand and sixteen handbook, a section on, you know, employee relations. So, being curious on the phone, you know, having a corporate dress at work, those kind of things. And overall, all of them liked that old pre-two thousand and sixteen type of policy on those topics, and they weren't included in the most recent ones. So, we reasserted some of that. So, I identified some policies that are specific to writing scripts that needed to be drafted, and some were, which generally have gone over those. I thought it was the sheriff last week on the...
Hey, Jeannie, can you turn your, the volume on your computer? Can you turn it down? So, we can turn our microphones back on, maybe keep the back feed out.
Okay. Is this any better?
Yeah, yeah, we're not getting the back feed now. Now, the public can hear too.
Okay. Great, great. So, anyway, I think overall, the, most of the department heads and electeds are on board with the changes that I've made. I, the issues that I see and the ones that I'm starting to present to the board are issues where the current policies that you have have been misapplied, or have been applied differently throughout the department. And that's some of, you know, based on the advisables that were given by the clerk's office. And then, some of it was based on, you know, the new, the most current handbook, not in relation to the decisions. So, I think there needs to just be cleared up on that. I think there's just, the way that some department heads apply things are different, and that's where I think, you know, we need to get that lined out, and be specific on what those are going to look like. I mean, I think certainly as far as elected officials go, and we talked about this before, is there an entity in and of itself? But as you mentioned, you guys are the ones in charge of giving money to the department for their employees. And so, I, I really think that most of them are on board with the proposed changes. And certainly, I'm hoping that they can come to the meeting when we have it on the handbook. But I think they welcome the changes. And I think it's, where some of the rub comes along is, that departments have been misadvised, in my opinion, or have been reading different versions of the handbook when they try to apply different things. And I think that's where some of the confusion and difficulties have come from.
So, again, I'm back to, if we are doing a new handbook, if we're doing a new handbook, we need to, and we've given her that authority to do that, and if she reaches out to those, we can't, this motion was made to turn this stuff over to, we gave authority to BIRA to investigate the handbook, the HR stuff, to work with Jeannie on those things. We did that as a board, just like we did the motion as a board. We cannot pick and choose, as long as it's not payroll, we can't pick and choose what portions of the motion that we're going to follow. If a motion is made and we had no discussion nor disagreement with that motion, then everything needs to be turned over, that's within that motion. Or, we need to, as a board, to decide that this handbook is a waste of time, and we, still, somebody's going to have to explain to me why we put the motion in place in the first place and pay for this if she was going to spend all the time to do this and we weren't going to accept the results that she found from it in the first place.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, yeah.
I think when you asked me to start this process, you asked me to get some majority, find out what the majority of the elected and department heads won, and let you know. And I think that's where I'm at. I think with the majority, if not, you know, maybe one or two of them that are questioning it, so I think the majority of them are finding that this handbook revision is helpful. And I think, you know, once we have the meeting, they can let you know that too, but...
I, I don't question that at all, and I don't question the work that you put into it. I, I think that you're getting mixed signals. As I said, we had one board just said, go do this handbook. And we have department heads and other individuals, you know I voted against it too. At this point, I'm not sure what is right or wrong, because I'm not an HR expert. But I do know that so far, we've gotten no result, because we're pushing back and forth with each other. And I want some clarification from this board on how we're going to move forward with it, because I don't see, I don't see any results even happening if we're pulling against each other from both directions. We have to determine whether or not we're going to move forward with this. You know, one comment that, and I'm not trying to put words in Commissioner Todd's mouth, is, it's been this way for a long time. Do we want to stir the, stir the pot? Well, if, my reply to that is, if we, if we have been doing it wrong, and I'm not saying we have, but if we have, then yeah, there's a time to stir the pot and do it correctly. Because at some point, if we're doing it incorrectly, we're going to get called on. But if it's always worked and everything goes smoothly, then again, we had an original motion, and I'm not sure why it happened or when it happened. So, I'm just looking for that clarification. And I think that it doesn't matter what the old board did at this point, it's the new board, and I think that's the direction that we need to go in. That's all my comments. Do you have any?
Um, no, I don't have any comments. I, I think that from what I've seen, Jeannie, what she's doing, she's tried very hard to really do her research and make sure that everything is done properly. She's talked to LGLP and other people, making sure that everything in our handbook is kosher as far as the updates and what we have. You know, you know how I feel about it. You know, yes, we can say forever, yes, this is how it's been done, and that's fine. Okay, it's fine until it's not. And the world has really changed since these things... these things started going, you know, the way things have been, been done for years and years and years. The world is a, is a changed place, and we have to change with it. And we don't like change. It's not always pleasant for everybody. But I, to defend Jeannie, and I guess myself, I, you know, what Susie said earlier, we totally understand the statute of, of the department heads. This is, this is human resources and policy and procedures. We have to all be consistent with some of these procedures, or, or we're going to pay the price, literally, eventually. And I think, Jeannie, when we go over that, that's why we're not doing the handbook review today, because she couldn't be here, and she wants to, to be able to have the department heads in on it as we discuss it. So, that's why we're not doing that today. She just wanted to bring up some of these things that she saw as potential problems, that we need to talk about, that have to do with compensation and hours, and, and things that we need to decide as commissioners.
My question goes to Michael. And in that motion that was made at the last meeting, was there anything that was outside statute or regulations that we were, when that motion was made, that could come into question later? Or was that, was that motion illegitimate? I mean, I did reach out to Jeremiah, and there's a lot of counties that still use the clerk as their HR person, and then there's a backup person, in fairness to our county clerk. There, there is still that. There are counties that have converted over to an HR person slash commissioner's administrator, that he said is also going very successful, because I believe, I think, and I'm not putting words in her mouth, that she thought maybe it could become a conflict of interest for the attorney. I felt the same way. I think it's a conflict of interest to leave HR in her department, because what if the problem is in her department? Or what if it's in the, I mean, ultimately, the attorney's going to get it anyway? But in that motion, was there anything that was done that was not legal, or against statute, against an elected official at all?
I mean, you guys talked about transferring the HR department temporarily to our office, and getting a HR person, county commissioner administrative assistant, or whatever you call it. Those HR duties, I believe, I mean, that's under that statute we talked about, can be delegated, you know?
And they're delegated by the commissioners, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the HR issue, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm confusing the two issues. The, you know, it's the employee stuff, the complaints, obviously, if there's a conflict, you have to kick it out. Handbook questions, that's an HR issue. Payroll, obviously, isn't. And, you know, just some of the things I hear, I heard some stuff that, you know, clerk Haglock might have been saying this stuff, but then since I've talked to her, she really hasn't been resistant or anything. So, she's working with me on transitioning this and getting it done, so.
Okay.
Jeannie, this is Susie. Can you send me a copy of the new handbook as far as it's goes right now?
Yeah, I can send it. I just had it first day of Friday, Susie, because I'm just putting the last touches on it, but I'm kind of, why am I giving everybody a copy?
Okay, yeah, because I haven't seen a copy for a while now, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess I'm a little confused on, on a few things here. The handbook is a portion. It's not completely HR, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, the motion, I'm just going back to the motion, and making sure that, that the information that was agreed upon in the motion was transferred to the attorney's office, so it can reside there temporarily. That was the agreement, correct?
Yeah.
And was there, was there any, I know, it was a little rocky. We had an amendment on the motion, and things like that, and it felt like we were kind of, but I think we all understood after the amendment was made, what that boiled down to. Was there any congestion since the motion till now with any of the, the transfer of information? There wasn't any? Okay.
Never.
So, if we get a new employee, which we're going to be getting, some new employees soon, when they come in to, to start the process, they will go to the county attorney's office to get their benefits forms, and payroll forms, and whatnot, and go through the process. And those forms will then go back to Becky.
Anything that has to do with retirement, Blue Cross Blue Shield, that will stay in my office. It's got confidence, it's got...
The forms will.
And it will stay in my office.
The forms will.
Only thing that...
But the education part...
The only thing he'll get is the handbook. Mike, when I have already discussed it.
Well, yeah, that's where I think we're all a little fuzzy, maybe.
And in the handbook, it discusses the retirement and all of that. It's been added to the handbook.
That's correct.
And that will be there.
But we're all in agreement that we feel like there needs to be more education on those things for new employees. And that is part of human resources, to do the educational part of benefits. Jeremiah said he could do a Zoom meeting with us, with other counties that have human resources, and he could also bring in another attorney if we wanted to discuss how it's worked as statute. Jeremiah said statute-wise, the benefit educational part is in human resources. The forms that go into payroll, that is your responsibility. So, once they go through the educational part of the benefits with the human resources person, then they either help them fill out their forms, or they fill out their forms, those forms come back to you. Those forms are yours.
Well, it's done in different counties. If this, if something's missed, and whoever is telling them doesn't tell them correctly, that comes back on my office. It is going to stay within my office, because that has to do with you.
I'm going to disagree with you on that.
Well, that's fine, you can.
I think the educational part, yeah, that's HR, and I think they sort of intermingle with one another. I mean, it's, in my head, when it comes to that benefits, retirement stuff, I think they kind of intermingle, and clerk's office and the HR will probably have to work together on that stuff.
Is HR going to assume the liability if they misinform somebody on payroll, and it gets put in wrong, and it comes back onto the clerk's office?
Oh, why would they on payroll?
HR's not...
On education, on Blue Cross Blue Shield, what would that have to do with payroll?
If, if they don't fill their forms out right, and all of a sudden, they're paying deductions or having deductions that aren't right?
That Becky's taking out of their paycheck?
They only have so many days to get all of their information back to us.
When I got, when I got my, my stuff from Amber this time, frankly, no one went over it with me. I just got the packets. No one told me about it.
Would like to discuss it with her.
And I have been told by other employees, the same thing happened to them. When they came to work, no one talked to them about their benefits. No one talked about the retirement.
And that's not true. She comes in here and...
They simply, that is not true. They give them the packet, and they are not told about that. The education part is what we should be concerned about. The form part goes to into payroll, just like it always has. But your human resources, that's what they're here for. They're here to make sure that your employees are educated, and have a good understanding of their benefits, their retirement, their vacation, their sick leave. They go through the handbook, they go through all of the policies. And the supervisors can be involved in that, of course. And they will have their own policies, probably, like I said, inter-office policies. But that's what a human resources person does. They make sure that everyone is, understands their benefits as, as put out.
And that is something we need to put in our HR manual, that a new employee will sit down with HR and payroll at that time.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you have to do it that way, because there are people as far as...
That way, it does, that way, if payroll has a problem with it, they could, it could be brought to a head at that time, when the new employee...
And I agree with that. A lot of places where you go to work, when you first sit down to go through the payroll part, and the benefits part, there is a payroll person there, and you go through that part together. So, you work on it together.
We just solved the problem right here. That needs to be addressed in the handbook for new employees. They will meet with HR and payroll.
I think that's fair.
Do you get that, do you get that addition to the handbook, Jeannie?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I just have something similar to that. I mean, I'm kind of just elaborate. I mean, my, envisioning kind of how that would happen is, is the employee would meet with Becky's office, and then effort to sign up for payroll. And again, there'd be a form that the department head or someone else sent to Becky, and with the employee to sign them up. We could have the HR person present. If there were discussions about retirement, whatever, my understanding is, typically, the packet is given, and they have 30 days upon which to complete some forms for Blue Cross Blue Shield and things like that. So, I don't know necessarily if those decisions are made at that first meeting, but at least you could provide the education on some of that at that first meeting. Then once they got signed up, and we have the appropriate form filled out for Becky for all those things, and that would go into the payroll system, however she does it. And then if you have additional questions that come about on the handbook, or, you know, any other kind of complaints or anything else, we could go through the HR person.
My phone, I have just a question.
I think if, if that happens, which I think is the smart way to do it, then it needs to, the HR person, or whoever's going to be representing HR, and the department head need to sit down before they meet with the employee, so that they're not conflicting each other when they're talking to the employee, to go over, you know, this is what I'm going to discuss, and this is what we're going to discuss, and make sure before they sit down, that we don't have two departments going, well, no, that's not right. Yes, that's, no, that's not right. Then we will have confusion in that education process.
Then I'll discuss finally. Everybody good with it?
I know it was a little rocky for me. I'm not, I'm not completely sad. I haven't, you know, started a new job in quite a while. But going down through some of the paperwork, it would have been nice to have a little bit of education there, just to, just to kind of lay it out. I know the pack, the show, the packet showed up, but that's a lot.
I mean, they didn't come right out and say it, but it, and part of that education extending that, we had commissioners that didn't really get their emails set up for weeks and weeks after that. I mean, and I don't know if that's something we can do better, or our IT group do better, but I was aware that they weren't getting some of their emails, which also leaves them in a shortfall. So, if there's employees that have to go through a process where they're not getting stuff, I, I don't know if that's happening or not. And that's not a blame game. That's a, that's not a blame game. It's, I don't know what we're doing, you know, I got mine relatively quick.
Just because the commissioners take command and get attention care.
And that's, that's part of human resources also.
Right. And maybe that's where we can improve in that process too, because, I mean, I'm sure the employees go through some frustration of, well, I, I didn't know, or no one ever told me. And if we can do better with that, then I'm all for it.
Well, these are some, you know, trials that we have to go through to figure out some of our shortcomings on, you know?
Well, that's why I don't think we should get upset with each other about it. I think we should just, like we just do right now, we just solve that problem. I don't think it's made to point fingers at each other. That's not the point of it. It's to make the process better.
Anything else under the HR discussion? We are winding down to our end of our agenda then.
And more.
Lunchtime. And since we, since Jeannie can't be here, we won't have our HR workshops. We'll reschedule that. Okay?